Live in the area just west of the MacLiff Heart. Historic district is coming. They hurt you. Very important. But on the issue here, as we see the transformation of that, we have the subway and we have the CRA. And the CRA has made a difference. Hollywood has come back. Okay, Hollywood did not attract us.
Tom, can I just interrupt for a second?
Yes.
Regarding the city council, did you vote to maintain the CRA funding in its current proportion?
Absolutely. Last week Jerry Brown is rethinking his position. Okay, because it's not just Los Angeles. There's 422-plus cities in the state. There's 58 counties. It's not easy to just say, oh, we could do it this way, we could do it that way. There's always establishment. And also, Allison, can you explain how the CRA works? Taxes-wise? How's it work?
Not right now, I can't.
Okay, so I think we all should understand that that tax, as they circled the district, they say that tax, they freeze the tax at what it is, and parts of it go to the school district, go to the county, but then the part and the increment goes to the agency that helps to do things. And I want to let you know when you're at the red light at Finley and Hillhurst, thanks to the CRA, I got the funding to put that light in.
Okay, Tom, stay there. We're gonna go on to our next topic, and it is directed at Tom, or for Tom. It's about public-private partnerships. How do you feel about the city initiative to gain private partners for some of the city's cultural, recreational, and entertainment facilities, like golf courses, sports, the Griffith Observatory, and Barnes-Dahl Art Park?
How many are friends of the Observatory here? I know Chris Leib's on their board. That's a public-private partnership. How many are friends of Barnes-Dahl? That's a public-private partnership. How many are friends with the Greater Los Angeles Zoo Association? That's a public-private partnership on this. They look to that. The most current issue is, is they didn't want to put out to bid to see if there was an institution that wanted to help our Cultural Affairs Department, which operates at the Barnes-Dahl facility. The city council, Mr. Garcetti, who's the councilman of that district, and I seconded his motion to retract that. We're gonna find a way to operate, and it may be somewhat of a co-op, a new method here. Because it's important to see the love, and I had many hearings, and I listened to people. I listened to people. I'm chairman of Arts at Parks. And Arts at Parks held these hearings, and many came down with these gray-orange sweatshirts saying Barnes-Dahl. And they said, we wanna run it. But you know what? Maybe there's an opportunity to be a custodian, as the city should be, of the property, and look to the artist to help teach the children, look to the teachers, and make sure the funding to help made for the teachers is there at some administration, as opposed to someone who's from a department, whose function is, could be replaced by a partnership that way. You're not gonna see, and the county went through this in the mid-'90s. Anybody friends of Blackma or friends of the Natural History Museum or something like that? Philharmonic at the Hollywood Bowl, they had partnerships. And it's not a scary thing, but specifically for Barnes-Dahl, that was retracted. But it's good to have these partnerships to help further the commitment that can be made. And that's what you see all over. But specifically at Barnes-Dahl, working with Mr. Garcetti, it's with Ron, we're committed to working with the community to find alternatives to help blossom Barnes-Dahl Art Park.
The recent move to enter into a private-public partnership with parking structures went up in smoke this week. It was an ill-advised opportunity to sell off revenue-generating assets for short-term paper-shuffling gain. And it collapsed under the weight of its own absurdity. And this is the type of proposals we get. So without going into the merits or the validity of the concept of a private-public partnership, the fact remains, it's not something the city of L.A. does well. The most recent attempt to put out a call for proposals, for example, at Barnes-Dahl, including asking three departments that don't get along, Cultural Affairs, RAC and Parks, and General Services, to agree on how that would work. Then the proposal went out without us having any real numbers. Nowhere on earth do you enter into a business deal without some numbers. And in the city of L.A., it's kind of important, I believe, that anything we do takes place openly, transparently, and with accountability, and with your ability to have some oversight.
Yes.
This particular scheme, for lack of a better word, took place so that the insiders didn't understand it. The three departments that were involved couldn't agree on the numbers. Everyone else was responsible except for the person you were speaking to, and the money went to whomever you were speaking to. It benefited nobody. It was completely vague, incomprehensible, and classically consistent with what we get on these ill-conceived proposals that simply collapse on a regular basis. So it's gotta stop.
I actually took action on this issue. Yeah, Stephen, you are right. I met with Saul. He is the Assistant General Manager. One of the things I do when I speak to city people is I figure out how much they make before I talk to them. The more they make, the more I expect of them. The less they make, the less I expect of them. Saul makes $140,000 a year. He came to a meeting with his hands in his pockets and no paper. No papers, no anything. I simply said to him, I believe the community of Las Feliz and Silverlake might, might be able to raise the money to keep this public. Do you know how much it would cost? He said, I have no idea. I says, is it $2? I don't know. Is it $2 million? I don't know. So Stephen, you're exactly right. First, the city had no idea how much Barnes-Dahl costs. Okay? And the notion of sending it out to RFP was ridiculous. But again, I took action. I did a letter-writing campaign. The people at Barnes-Dahl themselves, the folks who worked there, said, did anybody ever consult us? Just as the students at John Marshall High School said to me last week, I wished you had asked us before you built the $7-million field. Because we would've said, thanks, but no thank you. We have different priorities. So, I'm the president of Friends of Thomas Stark King Middle School. We're friends of King Middle School. We're not in partnership. We're there to assist the teachers and the principal to deliver a good product. That's it. We're not power-hungry where we wanna be equal partners. We're there to assist. And in Barnes-Dahl, there are many good people in this city who would run it where they given a chance to innovate. And still, I have a letter in the city council again. I need the numbers, because you know what? I can go out to Las Feliz and I can raise that money. But I don't know if it's $2 or $2 million. I have no idea. Thank you.
This is not two same-concept question about private-public partnerships. This goes to Tom. Do you feel that the city alone or working with a private partner would be best able to realize the full revenue-producing potential of these venues? Do you have concerns that these kind of partnerships may lead to overdevelopment and over-commercialization to the detriment of the users of the facilities? And if so, what steps would you take to prevent this?
First of all, I don't know if the house lights could come up a little. Can you throw the house lights up? Anybody in the back here? Throw the house lights up. You can?
They're up.
They're up. This is the best you can do. I want you to put a spotlight on there. Saul Shankman, give him a big hand. Hiker Emeritus, 94-years-old, hikes every day in the park, a great friend of all of ours. And I mentioned Saul down there at Cultural Affairs. I wanted to salute a real hero right there. And I had to do that because it's the people. And also, when you talk about the students, just to let you know, I worked with all the students before who wanted to see this for years and years and years. It never happened. Never happened. Never happened. It takes time to build things. So you gotta realize who you're talking to today. We're not there when the students wanted it for years and years. And that's an important community facility. On our partnerships, as we have that there. Thank you. Well, there's one barrister here in the corner who runs track. Good job. Thank you, George Mosh. Partnerships are real important, but we're in the business, not necessarily to be in business, we're in the business to help people. And now we have to look to new models. We have to re-engineer. So I'm not saying it's perfect, Allison, but I think it's a method that we have to look at, and especially in smaller cities, you see it a little bit more effective. And that's what we're gonna have to look at. We're gonna have to look at a smaller city concept, as is in a village. Now Griffith Park is in its own, as a very large institution. Very large institution, as it is. But in the smaller concepts, we have to look at what the partnerships could bring and how it could be best. Because everybody expects your dollar to pay for that, but the dollar's not there. Okay? So now we need partnerships to do that. And it has to be done right. And also, you wanna do it in good taste. You don't wanna see advertising all over the place. You don't wanna see rock concerts there. You wanna see something that benefits the community. But Allison, I work with people and work with the community to try to find those solutions and have it.
Any of you would like to comment on the recent case E.T. program? Not, maybe in a minute. About commercialization of the park with Yogi Bear? Same question. If anyone has seen that, I'm not sure if you have, but it's the park with, I think it was Holby, with what could look like a ton of advertisements.
The scariest words I've heard this evening are revenue-producing potential, as it applies to our community. Because we pay, we pay again, we continue to pay, and we really pay. And then we look for opportunities to balance the city's budget by looking for revenue-producing potential, all the way teaching me more than I need to know about land deed law. Because it was during the reopening of the observatory that Nancy and I spent a year fighting the fact that you couldn't just walk up the hill, but you had to pay $8 to go the other direction to catch a shuttle, which deprived us of the opportunity to walk up the hill. And it was actually going back to the original land deed when Griffith J. Griffith said, this gift to the city of L.A., to the people of L.A. will always be open and free. And we seem to find we seem to have a city leadership that keeps looking for ways to rethink that commitment. And it's incumbent on us, as a people, as a community, to honor our deals. And that's a land deed with someone who gave us some pretty spectacular land. And so I'm completely opposed for the city of L.A. to keep looking for revenue-enhancing, revenue-producing potential that includes selling advertising in parks, looking for ways to charge you for something like the zoo parking lot, squeezing more and more money out of people who have less and less to give. There are other ways. There are many ways for us to work together, to put our heads together and come up with the funding and put it where it belongs. But we shouldn't be balancing on the backs of people who can't afford to give anymore to participate in the elements of a great city, which are parks and libraries and the great things that make the city so wonderful.
$80,000. That's what the Halloween thing, that's what it brought into the park last year. What was it called, the hayride or something? $80,000. That's pathetic. Okay? At Franklin Elementary, at our Halloween fair, we brought in $41,000 in one afternoon, parents and volunteers for the school. So, you know, this revenue-producing $80,000. If I understand it correctly, the other one, the Greek Theater, do we know how much that brings in? It's pathetic. Okay? And just back to this whole thing with Barnes-Dahl again. The politicians have botched this city up over the last 20 years. You know what they're trying to do now? They're trying to blame the employees. Oh, we'll privatize everything, and then it will, and then it shall be perfect. Okay? That doesn't count for the schools, and it certainly doesn't count for city facilities. Give employees of this city a chance to innovate. Okay? Give them leaders who respect them. Okay? You don't wanna hear what Barnes-Dahl employees have to say about their management, and their management who are doing nothing. And lots of them, of course, making more than $140,000 per year. And I know I keep harping on this, but we keep, you know, we talk about, oh, how can we pay for the ranger? We can pay for the ranger. We just need to get rid of these people who are doing nothing. Okay? I'm sorry. What was the question?
He's gay. I think you covered it. No, there was a case E.T. report recently that showed what, I don't remember which park it was, but what it could look like with all the revenue potential billboards. And it was a, some sort of deal with Warner Brothers, with Yogi Bear. And it tried to not look like an ad, but it was exactly the same artwork.
So no, no on this.
My time's up. I took the rest of your time, I'm sorry. All right. The next topic is a big one for this community, and it's Griffith Park. So we're gonna, I know it's very important to who and what we are. So we have a couple of questions about park issues, and we're gonna start with Stephen. This is about the master plan, which was first released in 2005. It was actually commissioned in 2003. And it's, to this day, it's not complete. It's, I think it was $400,000 cost. How important do you feel the proposed master plan or the vision plan? And if we need to explain what that's about, you can. For Griffith Park is for the future management and regulation of the park.
City of Los Angeles is also known as the city of plans. We have big plans. We've got a general plan, a transportation plan, a housing plan. We've got master plans, vision plans, community plans, specific plans. We've got a golf plan, a tree plan, a bush plan, and a light plan. But we don't have the plan for planning, how to plan the plans into effect. So Nancy and I went to a meeting at Friendship Hall many years ago. It was the Griffith Park draft master plan meeting. And well, it's got Griffith Park in the title, so we thought, that sounds good. And who doesn't love plans? Let's make some plans for the weekend. I've got big plans. So we went to see what this plan consisted of, and I'm telling you, it was a nearly violent room. We were shocked. This plan was dividing the community. Since then, a group was formed from the community to work on redrafting the draft master plan. And years have been invested, and this is the way to do it. The community invested years developing the draft master plan for Griffith Park. The old one had great proposals for, I don't know, ski lifts and a hotel and, I don't know, all sorts of wildness. The new plan comes from the community, the people in the neighborhood. And I'd like to see that one, one that came from the people in the community. I'd like to see that one come to life. That's not the murmuring on the horizons that I hear. And I think it's very important that what happens comes with a full support of the community. And lots of good folks have invested a lot of good time developing the draft master plan. And it needs to be a master plan. Plans have to have enforcement authority. Plans have to be things that you can count on. Plans can't be nebulous, debatable, subject to variances and exceptions. They need to be plans that you can count on without becoming an expert in the law. And that's what it takes right now, because we're constantly fighting City Hall, saying, well, but I thought it was my right. I thought it was my plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
When I first joined the Neighborhood Council a couple of years ago, we were just finished debating that plan. I was pretty naive back then. I remember saying at the meeting, why don't we just call Mr. O'Grady and ask him if he's gonna do all of this? And I was just surprised at the answer. There was just a lack of trust in the room. I didn't understand it. I disagreed even then. I was wrong. Okay? This here is the Melendez plan. It's all in there. Costs 400 and something thousand. That money is gone. It's over. It's gone. Okay? That is criminal, to see all that money go away. Madame Melendez herself says, I don't know, somebody told me to put the hotel on top of the park. Mr. O'Grady responded, well, I didn't tell you. So we can't find anyone who told her to draw a friggin' hotel on top of the park. I mean, this is amazing. And I'm sorry, but I'm a little sick and tired of discussing this thing. Now there's another master plan, and Frank Massey, my friend, just sent it to me. You know what's in it? It's lots of red lines crossing out all the sentences. And they renamed it to a vision plan. That sounds like shenanigans to me. Okay? I have to tell you, okay? I've had my beef with the proposed committee over the years, but I'm telling you, this thing needs to be watertight. It needs to be a plan. Can we leave this park alone once and for all? And we need more park space, no question. But what we need is people's park. Griffith never intended this to be an amusement park. He meant it to be a place that you could get away for the day and get lost away from the city. And that you could make a trip over a rock, you know? And not improved. Okay? Leave it alone, just like it is. So we can go somewhere that has not been touched by humans. What we need are people parks close to where the people live. Okay? Thank you.
Fortunate to live in our area. Every day I'm in the park. Beautiful sunrise. If you get an opportunity, get up early, come walking, come up to Mount Hollywood. It's beautiful. In this issue here, Allison, you know who asked for the master plan in the first place?
I don't know.
I got elected, and I asked for a master plan. Because a lot of things were happening. There was a sewer line having to come through here, a water line, which you see, all this cake. There were two general managers. Both lived in Las Feliz. Okay? I trusted that department. They operated independently and came up with this plan. Who rejected the plan? I rejected the plan. I asked for the community to be appointed. And don't believe, I don't even know you then, Mr. O'Grady. So you know, you can say that as you talk about that. And I don't think you've ever, ever, really ever called me to reach out. Because I collaborate with people, and I work with the local community. In addition to that, for those long-timers who live in the neighborhood, there used to be children's playgrounds at Commonwealth and at Vermont. And that was real important. And it's important to identify that. There used to be youth baseball right here along Riverside Drive. I'm proud that we got the all-purpose sports field and to make sure that the sports field is available for youth. And I'm proud in working for John Ferraro, we did build an amusement park, a water park, if you remember that, some of you old-timers. Marilyn, I didn't mean to say that. Some of you veterans, some of you veterans, the 26 acres were there, are soccer fields. Okay? Now this is a vision plan, master plan. We need to do a lot to enhance the protection of the park. The most important thing was the swell to make it a historic monument. Anything that you wanna do now, you have to go to the planning department. The planning department has a historic monument. Thank yourselves for that, because you support that, and I'm very proud about that. Yes, things need to be corrected, but I absolutely rejected it. And also for the words, I also asked for the LFIA to select your person. Who did you guys select? You selected Vallee. And then the Neighborhood Council selected Bernadette. Others selected, the only person that I did appoint is the Green Honorary Mayor of Griffith Park, Louie Avrata.
I wanna ask some direction from the LFIA. We have about 10 minutes, and we still have some questions about the Greek and the Deodar trees and some other issues, or do we wanna go to questions from the audience that have been reviewed?
Allison, why don't you continue with the questions you have?
Dada says to continue with the questions I have.
Do you have other questions? I mean, these questions are
Chris?
Yes.
Now the questions submitted from the audience.
I gave them to you. The first question was about Universal. And in fact, you have the park, Universal.
Okay, we have 10 minutes.
Well, 30-second answers.
Okay, maybe we could go down to about a minute. For each question. Okay. And if, I don't know how long we wanna stay, but, thank you. Okay. Let's see. Who's first here? I think it must be Mr. O'Grady. What will you do to curb irresponsible hillside development and building in safeties predictable capitulations in the form of variances and sign-offs by inspectors?
Again, we need a community plan. We're doing variances and modifications for everything because our community plans have not been updated. So there should not be variances. Either on Luric, on Luric Street, either you can build a two-story or you can't. To be honest, again, I'm sick and tired of dealing with the stuff in Neighborhood Council. It's every month. I wanna do this, I wanna do that, I wanna do the other. Let's decide as a community what it is we want built where. Let's draw it on a map, and that's what you can build. Let's fight about it once and be done with it. Right now, we keep debating the same thing over and over. And frankly, you know what it's doing? It's actually pitching us all against each other. And that's not a good thing.
Stephen?
I'd actually say that we need a general plan, one that's absolute and bulletproof. And I say that because there are great cities with great plans that have stood for 100 years, and you never, ever get to develop the land that's specified in the plan as land that's gonna be kept open. And you know the cities I'm talking about. We, on the other hand, have a general plan that's soft, malleable, challengeable, literally doesn't exist for all practical purposes. And the community plan, for all that it's huffed up to be, actually increases density on some of the streets that you think have an infrastructure problem, a density problem, a parking problem. And I'm telling you, it starts with the big, bold, general plan, and that one has everything in it, from housing to transportation, and it goes on. But ours is soft. From that come smaller, specific plans where we get to identify specific communities. But you gotta start with a huge commitment to preserving and protecting and identifying what those areas are and how they're gonna be protected. And we don't have that now. And in fact, we laid off the people responsible for doing it.
Having benefited of working with the people daily, Mary Richardson, who happens to live in Las Feliz, is our community planner. And I met with her just recently, and the plan is coming up. Mr. Ziegler, I'd like to ask that you host something so she could come and outreach to Las Feliz. I think they will show that the community plan for Hollywood, which stretches from all of Griffith Park and Mahollin, from Doherty down to Melrose over to Hyperion, you will see things that preserve neighborhoods. This is a city of great neighborhoods. This is one of the great neighborhoods. You will be positive about that. And I will work with you on it. And if there's just things you don't like, I will, in a collaborative way, work to change what the consensus is of the community. It's about working with people. And I'm fortunate to have a 30-year veteran of city service, a dedicated public servant like Renee Whitezer, who's helped so many times. And it's staff that helps me get things done. I don't go alone, and I also rely on committees that work for that. You work with people. I work with people.
I really like this question from the audience, and then I have one question, and then Mr. Ziegler will come up and wrap up the program. This is from Jacqueline Kerr, formerly of the GGPNC. Would each of the candidates explain how they would develop both Hyperion and Hillhurst Boulevard?
First of all, I call it Hillhurst Avenue, Allison. So that's the one thing, because Hillhurst is not a boulevard. Jacqueline, if you made that mistake, I'm shocked, because you've been a great friend for many, many years. What we've done on Hyperion is downzone some of that area of Hyperion. What we've done is lower the heights. It must be a contour with the community. I also wanna be sure that we make sure that we work with the neighborhood that's there. We're not Irvine, California. We're a built community. 1916, the homes weren't even built here until '25 and other parts of those eras. We have to work with the existing challenge, make sure the height district is friendly. I like pushback, more setback, so there's more open space in an area to make it walkable. I'm proud of Silverlake, and if you haven't walked around Silverlake, walk around Silverlake. The wonderful path, which we are gonna compete on Tesla, so that you can walk safely around the whole area, is a great addition. And I fought the Department of Water Power successfully to move the walking path, because walking counts in that area. The same is true for Hillhurst and Hyperion. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Stephen? It's just like Hyperion and Hillhurst Avenue.
Well, the first thing I do is I take a look at the streets, and I would discourage cut-through traffic that uses those as freeway alternatives. And if you think about, in both cases, you've got a lot of people going somewhere else that use those streets. So if you really wanna support the people that live in the area and operate businesses on those streets, we've gotta make those streets safe for everybody. And by everybody, I mean everybody. And right now, you need an armored car to get through there. If you're bold enough to ride a bicycle down either of those streets, the streets are in such bad shape, you'll end up in bad shape. And I say that because I'm riding those all the time. So those streets need to be made safe for everybody. And if you think about the fact, the only improvement you see typically follow somebody being killed, and that's no way to run a city. So the streets of L.A. are in bad shape throughout the city. You could probably all think of your own street first as a place to start and how we could start working on our streets. But the specific question here, I'd like to reframe, it's not about developing, it's supporting who's there now with great streets that encourage and invite people to visit and stay and spend money and contribute to the economy and to do it safely with the ability to cross the street and get to the other side.
So the question was about development, not about streets?
What's...
It's also about streets.
It's about how would you develop or not develop Hyperion and Hillhurst Avenue?
Well, I like Hillhurst just the way it is, frankly. I go to Little Downs every Friday night, and I love that place. So if development on Hillhurst looks more like Little Downs, and I hear your office is upstairs, little places like that, I really like them. We walk to, is that funny? We walk to restaurants from our house, which is a few blocks away from Hillhurst, and we love it. I would love to explore the idea of putting some kind of median down the middle of Hillhurst so as to slow or calm the traffic a little bit. I said explore. I was Tom Pussin. I'm listening to the people. I'm listening. But just going on to the thing about streets, when I joined the Neighborhood Council a few years ago, one of the things I always wanted to do is, I'd love to see the sidewalks get steam cleaned on a regular basis. I hate chewing gum. I don't allow chewing gum in my house. I hate chewing them all over the sidewalk. And I really think we need a program to steam clean the, clean the commercial districts at least once a year. And one of the things I've worked on through Farm Feliz is getting shade trees planted wherever they're missing, because the more shade trees we have, the more canopy, and the more we can all walk and have a great time. So thank you for listening.
Thank you, Tomas. Okay, this is the last question, and whenever I interview anyone, I always end every interview with the same question. And I'm going to ask all three of you, and I'm going to start with Mr. Box. Is there anything that you'd like to say that you haven't been asked tonight?
First of all, I'd like to ask you to join me in thanking Tom LeBonge for 35 years of service in the city of L.A. That being said, I think it's important that we acknowledge that we're a city in crisis. And so you have an important choice to make, and I ask you to consider this. You have a choice between someone who's been doing a great job of being a very agreeable and responsive person and someone who's totally accountable and committed to moving us forward. So ladies and gentlemen, I thank you for the opportunity to join you this evening, and I ask you for your vote. Thank you.
Tomas, any questions? Did you die to be asked, did you get asked, or anything you'd like to say in closing?
Well, that sounded like his closing statement. Is this the closing statement? Or it's not the closing statement?
It is.
What is?
It's just done a little differently, but yes, it is.
I said we're going to keep laughing at me. Okay, so here we go. I worry about the city. I worry about other people. Okay? I'm doing fine. My wife's just eaten our four children. We're doing pretty well. We're not super rich, we're not poor. We have good schools. Okay? We live in a safe neighborhood. But you know what? That's not the case for most people. And frankly, I can't sleep at night thinking about that. Okay? I'm not super liberal. I'm not super do-gooder. I just don't think it's right that almost, you could almost say, most people in this city are not doing well. And one of the things that I want to bring to City Hall, my neighbor is not voting for me. You know why? Because he asked me, if I vote for you, will you pave my street? And I said, no. He said, why not? Because our street doesn't need paving. What we need to do in this city, we need to start to be a little more compassionate and shift the assets that we have, and we're a wealthy city, to the places that need them the most. Okay? So yes, likely if I were elected and you called for this, that, and the other, I'd say, are you sure that we need it? Maybe somebody else needs it more. Let's be honest, we're almost broke in this city, and we really need to take care of the most vulnerable first. And that is neighborhoods that are doing much more badly than we are. And that's what I'd like to do to bring to City Council. I just want to point out again, I'm a small business person. I know how to get things done. And Tom, I have to say, I resent you saying that I'm retired. I really do. I don't have a mortgage because we saved our pennies.
Okay, Tomas.
It's not that I'm retired.
Just start to have that, thanks.
I'm respectfully asking for your vote for City Council. My name is Tomas O'Grady. Thank you.
What question, if I, what I ask is first say thank you. Thanks for my family, my parents, who were both born in Los Angeles, who raised a big family, who taught us great values. Thanks for being able to help the people of Los Angeles and continue to help the people of Los Angeles. And outside our district, other citizens come up to me and say they would want me to be their councilperson, because I take care of neighborhoods. And I work throughout the city and help people throughout the city, whether it's San Vero, whether it's parts of the valley, whether it's in Watts. But I take the care of the fourth district, because that's my job. That's my job. And I'm proud of what I have done, and there's more that needs to be done. And there are challenges. This is not a city of ruin. This is a city of challenges at this moment, just like the federal government is challenged, just like the unbelievable transformation of Egypt. What a challenge that would be to be in the fourth district of Cairo. But I'm the candidate. I'm the one. I want to thank you. I want to thank the staff that I've built over the years to continue to serve you. And I want to thank the LFI from the past. It's the great president of today because of the LFI. I ask for your vote. Thank you very much. Thank you for coming, folks. Give yourselves a big hand.
Thank you, everybody, for coming and listening, and I hope that you enjoyed this forum and that you'll take whatever you've learned back with you, and don't forget to vote.